Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board Meeting, September eighteen, twenty eighteen. It's a little after seven o'clock. So, before we get to the first item on the agenda, do we have anything we have to take care of?
Of course.
I don't think so, but...
No.
Okay, great. So, we're gonna look for a Master Plan Steering Committee update. Michelle, why don't you start?
So, you attended the last meeting, right?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, so Amy and I attended the last meeting. It was a good meeting. There were a lot of good discussions. We worked on some of the highlights of it. And there's another, we, they did some presentations at Applefest. And our second, do you want me to read off what this is, the second forum?
Sure, if, yeah, if you wanna note that for people.
Is October fourth, from six to eight P M. at Algonquin Regional High School. And so, they're asking people to come out and do a second, second public forum. And the draft is online at surveymonkey.com. If they haven't taken the survey, if you can take the survey, that's helpful to us.
Yep, survey just went up end of last week.
Yep.
I took it.
On all the new material that we had submitted, right?
Yes, yeah. The, the, the second survey that's up pertains to the, the goals and recommendations.
Okay, yep. And then, do you have anything?
No, that's all I was gonna say, is the survey too has to do with the vision, goals.
And then, I just, this is just some thought for the board, because there's only two members who are on it. But I wanted to know after this, either prior to the October meeting, or maybe after it, maybe if the board could get just a copy of the goals of what we're trying to do, and just give like whether they think we're headed in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, everyone, everyone does have the latest information, not in front of you, but it was sent by email, and I can send it out separately, so you kinda just notice it.
Yeah. So, I would just recommend if the other board members wanna take a look at it and see if we're all headed in the right direction, and if there's anything missing that the Master Plan Committee needs to think about.
So, maybe we should add like an extra ten or fifteen minutes to the next meeting if we don't have too many hearings on, to take time to discuss those goals, make sure that we're...
So, so where, the, the goals have, the two meetings worth, maybe, at least two meetings worth. The, the goals have been, you know, not, not wrapped up, you know, as in there's no room to do anything else with them, but the, as far as the Steering Committee, so that we can present those goals at this October fourth forum, and talk about, again, the goals, you know, they're, they're in the, you know, various categories, land use, open space, transportation, pub, or public facilities. And, and then, part of October fourth and part of the survey is now we're getting into like the action steps or the recommendations of, you know, let's decide on what the goals are, and then, you know, how do we, you know, the steps to carry out each goal. So, that's the stage that we're at. And, and some of that information was presented, like Michelle said, at, there was a booth from the Master Plan Consultants with a couple volunteers from the Steering Committee at the farmer's market on Saturday.
Do we know if they got a lot of activity?
The, I actually wasn't there. This is, I think, the first Applefest I've ever missed.
I did.
They did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When I was there, people weren't there.
Yeah. Ja- Jason, I mean, I talked to both Fran Backstrom was there in the morning, and Jason Perot was, Perot was there in the afternoon. And, and they talked, they talked to a fair number of people, and, and they were very complimentary of Jeffrey Morrison Logan, the, he was, he's the main consultant. And he was the one that was present there. And, you know, that he did, had a lot of interaction with people, so.
Yeah, that's good. So, I just think it's good if the boy can take a look at everything and see if there's any, any sections that we're missing, or any ideas for future growth that we're missing. So, we could talk about it, bring it back to the Master Plan.
Yep.
Since we'll be using that in the future.
You wanna add to that?
Nope, it was all covered.
Okay.
Everybody should just do the survey. If you go to the Town of Northborough website, there's a link to the Master Plan.
And they can link to the survey from there?
From there, yeah. Perfect.
Anything else on the Master Plan?
No. Good, thank you.
Okay.
We got another six minutes.
You, that's right.
Town Common. We had our first design meeting last night.
Oh, okay.
Yep, we don't have the boards here, but they're online also. There's a Northborough Town Common Facebook page, and there were two designs brought forth by the consultants.
Who's the consultant for that?
Weston Sampson.
Okay.
Out of the Worcester office, or the gentleman we're working with.
Yep. So, everybody seemed really happy, and it was a great meeting. There were like forty people. There was a big turnout.
Wow, if somebody wants to see those plans, where they, where can they find them, do you know?
Well, right now, they're on the Northborough Town Common Facebook page, but hopefully, we'll get a copy here.
Yeah, we don't, the, 'cause Amy had asked me if I had the boards from last night, but what, what part of the exercise last night was, people got to write on the boards about what they liked or didn't like, or, you know, what they wanted to see in this corner, or... So, it was a combination of, you know, marking up the boards with markers, and then also doing, you know, a very planning exercise called a charrette, where you take sticky notes, right, right now, we use sticky notes. We used to use dots in the old days. But, and, you know, you kinda write down your, you know, what you'd like to see, or comments that you had on it. So, like Amy said, there was two designs that, or two options. And, and I, there was no vote or anything last night. That was not the purpose of it. It was just to present the plans. And I think overwhelmingly, people chose the, everyone chose the same option, which we just labeled as option one.
Right.
And so, they took the boards back, so that they can then work on those comments and integrate them into, you know, a more of a final design. And we'll have a second meeting probably in November. Could be as early as October, but probably November. And in between, we'll go into the Selectment also.
Okay, cool. So, Amy, since you're on both of the Steering Committee for the Master Plan and the Town Common, the Town Common work is consistent with what the Master Plan Committee is looking for?
It definitely is. And there were people even at the Town Common meeting talking about the Master Plan, so they all seem to be tied in together.
Good, excellent. Okay. Four more minutes.
Kathy, I just wanted to say that I know you mentioned that this is one of the first Applefest that you've missed, and I, you were, you were at the beginning of, the whole beginning of Applefest. But you, yourself, would have loved it, because with the parade on Sunday, Main Street was exactly how you envisioned. It was people walking up and down Main Street, shopping. It was, wouldn't you say? I mean, it really looked like, I'm not gonna say like Newbury Street or something, but it was like that.
Right.
You know, people were walking up and down, all the way from, you know, one end, which was a historical society down by the library, all the way down past Dunkin' Donuts. They were just walking up and down. So, and I know the businesses loved it, but what we talk about, that whole walkability, they came, they parked, and they walked. And they went to all the events. It was really great. You would have loved seeing it as a planner, not, talking about the walking in the town, walking up and down to various like churches or whatever events they're going to. You would have really liked it.
That's cool.
Yeah.
It was something for everybody, like everywhere, every area was used. And we should thank Michelle and Laura, 'cause it's only a committee of like six people who worked the whole year on Applefest. It was a huge event.
No, I know. The, the Planning for next year's Applefest probably starts next week, right Laura?
They don't give you no time, no days off. Everything that we talked about, from the Community Development Plan like fifteen years ago, to, you know, redoing the zoning and everything, it was, it was all about that, getting people out and parking and walking. You know, so it was a snapshot of what you would like to see.
And I miss the fireworks.
The fireworks are great.
Just didn't line up for me. But, yeah, I, I heard great things about the, as always, about the fireworks.
Right.
Just a, a couple other things, Teresa, just, the, I had sent an email, you don't have anything in front of you, but the Citizen Planning Training Collaborative, CPTC, you do have some information fr, from, about the variances, and Amy had talked about that at the last meeting. But they are, it should be by the end of this week that they will have their workshops scheduled put together for the fall. So, you'll all get a copy of that, and, and the town will, you know, cover the cost of anything that you wanna attend. What they try to do is spread it around through October and November over all of the regional planning agencies. So, there's probably only, probably two workshops that'll be in the Worcester area. You know, otherwise, there'll be one on the Cape, there'll be one out in Fitchburg, there'll be one probably up in Lo, a couple in each one of those locations.
The, the big one is in March, right?
Is in, yes, yep, at Holy Cross. And I think it's always the, it's always around St. Patrick's Day. I think it's the third Saturday. And, yeah, and that one, you get to pick, you know, the, I mean, all the courses basically are offered, plus o, other workshops. But, you know, the ones in the fall are, are great too. But, again, you're not gonna, you know, unless you wanna travel around the state. But, you know, you may or may not be interested in what they're offering in, in Worcester. But, and I don't know that yet. I'm not on the board anymore, so I don't have a sneak peek into what, what, what's being offered in Worcester. But they had said on their website that we should know by the end of this week. So, they should have it out by the end of this week.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I'll send that to everybody.
Okay. And I know, Carrie, you gave some information. Did you give information on that as well? Something from CMRPC.
Oh, yeah, I just, for in terms of the quarterly meeting?
Or did I receive information on the... Did I get an email from you that you were sending out information?
Yes, I just brought it. I forwarded it to you in a PDF file. I just brought the census.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that was, that was something separate that, that's the, I mean, the, the CPTC, which is overall from Massachusetts, UMass, all of the, the planning organizations, the regional planning commissions, and Central Mass usually will host a couple of them. And then separately, Carrie was at the, as the CMRPC rep, the Regional Planning Commission rep for the, for the Town of Northborough from the Planning Board. She attended their quarterly meeting last week. And I, just before the meeting tonight, I forwarded the information on the census from that workshop. If any, you know, if anyone wants a hard copy, let me know.
Did it.
So, now we can move on, seven fifteen.
Those are real things.
All right, public hearing for two sixty-seven to two eighty-one Southwest Cut Off Special Permit Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Dental Office. The applicant is Dr. Alexander Mohibian, and Northborough Family Dental. And we have Connor Stone Engineering here this evening. Hello.
David, you need the, yeah.
Yeah, you probably want just to... Yes. Me?
Yeah.
Yeah. You need to speak up.
Hello.
Thanks, Fred.
David, do we have the portable mic?
We do, but I'm not sure how well.
Oh, okay.
You've got the mic right there, as long as you speak clear.
Okay. Okay.
Sure.
Pick up the little thing on the side. At first, it said it was off when you touched it, and it went back. Yeah, I know. To show where that secret door is. Okay. I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
All right, so this site, that two sixty-seven to two eighty-one Southwest Cut Off, so it's actually four parts of the land. Oh, it's still just one piece, but it's actually thirty-five, four sets of parts of the land. So, the, the location, right across the street is the used car dealership. Right up the street, kind of in this area, is the intersection or Northborough Crossing. So, right now, there's nothing on the site. It's undeveloped, except for the cell tower in the back, with the access that comes off, past the next address. So, there's a gravel driveway going to go into that cell tower. And the site's generally divided in half, with a perennial stream running through the middle, with the kind of associated rat lanes on the other side. So, the proposal itself is a antistasis with parking beside. And essentially, they wanna relocate their office into the one right now in the corner of West Main and Southwest Cut Off. Move that office down. It's just kind of a little bit of a year ago, so the land is, is expanded a bit more. And so, we are within the Zone Three of the Aqua Protection District, and that's one reason we're right here above you, because this is also within the industrial district and plenty of water. Rule on special permits in the industrial district, usually would be quasi-ZBDA. So, the two things are Special Permit for Groundwater and Site Plan Approval. The building itself is about forty-one hundred square feet, and it'll be serviced by Public Water and Sewer, available in Southwest Cut Off. For drainage itself, we are taking the impervious area of the parking lot and bringing it to an infiltration basin right in here. That's the size to infiltrate the whole hundred-year storm. And then, the roof runoff from the building goes to a drywall. It's also sized for the hundred-year storm. So, as far as runoff from the site itself, there's really nothing leaving the development area, and there'd be no impact on these areas. And we'd also be introducing all that water back into the ground to not decrease any of the existing groundwater recharge to the underlying aquifer. For quality, as far as the aquifer goes, we have a pretreatment structure. This one of Fred's comments was to provide additional treatment beyond the catch basin. So, we're gonna switch that out with a storm scepter, which provides oil gas separation and sediment removal. And then, we also have a forbay after that for additional sediment removal and then infiltration. So, the water quality and quantity matches the existing conditions as far as the groundwater goes. Basically, it's a straightforward plan. There's not too much else to it. It's gonna develop upfront. It's about thirty-two thousand foot deep of clearing, and the rest remains as is today.
Fred, do you have any comments you wanna make?
Well, we have two letters from me, one on behalf of the Groundwater Advisory Committee, who held a hearing earlier this month on this project and continued it because the, well, the application indicates there was no potentially toxic or hazardous material to be stored within the building. At our meeting, the applicant indicated he might have some, he was getting some information. So, that information, some, it did come in. We're, I'm still reviewing it, but the discussion with groundwater was continued to the October meeting, so they would recommend that you continue your hearing as well. The other items in the letter from groundwater outline the, the first three outlined the items that were prompting the continuance. One was the information about the hazardous materials, the types, quantity, and where they would be stored. Confirmation of the X-ray machine would be a digital one rather than a base, as well as the contracts for the amalgam separator. Dentists are required to have a, a amalgam separator to remove amalgam products from patients.
Mouths.
Ma, spit.
Mouths.
Yeah. And, so it doesn't go into the sewer system, whether it's connected to town sewer or onsite subject, as was a previous case. So, there are contracts that go with that, and those should be submitted as well. There was some discussion about the periods of maintenance, and it seems though it wasn't clear at the meeting, or I feel expect it'll be cleared out by the next meeting for the groundwater review. The operation and maintenance plan was included in the, for the storm water, was included in the package, and should be made part of any decision. The drainage calculations were reviewed and are appropriate. The building, as Mr. Coroner cited, is connected to town sewer and water, which is a, a great asset for groundwater protection. And then, the project does require Earthwork Permit before they can start construction, and the typical hospital plan is required. The other letter that I presented to you was basically just the engineering and DPW review of the site plan. Many of the comments are the same. One of them was the copper piping that was shown on the plan. The piping protect the building to the water line in Route twenty was not indicated to be copper, and that has been corrected on the plan. I did receive a revised copy by today. The, I apologize, I did not see in the application the lighting plan, but I understand there was one that was committed and reviewed by the Design Review Committee. However, I still think that you may wanna discuss an additional light somewhere near the driveway where the traffic car is entering and exiting for Route twenty. Some people have indicated that stretch is a little bit dark. The, DPW and I have been requesting that you have a condition that allows us final review of any plans that have changes made to a project after it receives approval, or as part of the approval. So, the final plans that are issued for construction are what we're looking at, as well as what the contractor's looking at. It just helps to minimize a little bit of confusion later on.
Prior to starting the work?
Yes.
Okay.
Review and approval by the town engineer prior to them starting the work.
Okay.
We've had some instances where the decision recommends a few, requires a few things that aren't on the plan, and the contractor is building, it doesn't have the decision.
Right.
So, it, it leads to some confusion. I also indicated again, Earthwork Permit and in-order conditions from the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission did have a problem with their advertising, so they are holding a special meeting, a second meeting in September, next week on Monday, to hear this project, so it can go forward by in October. And that oil and water separator that I was looking for has been added to the plan, and again, the hospital plan. Don't get too far over that. If I can answer a question, if you ask.
Okay. Do you wanna talk about design review?
Uh, yeah. He, the applicant had met with us several times, gone before the design review process. We don't have all the stuff as far as...
Well, I, I sent a memo out to all of you from the Design Review Committee. I don't know if Deb made copies of it tonight or not, but, but it was three, at least three meetings that, that Dr. Mohibian came to. And, and ultimately, the Design Review Committee approved the, the design plans.
This was the one where you asked for some reduction in the amount of landscaping?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I also wanted, can I just ask, yeah, a question? Because what I'm remembering here from the snow storage, that's right up towards the front of where there's a little landscaping or Route twenty. And is that the only location? 'Cause I don't think you're gonna have much, I think you're gonna either, either haul it away, or you're gonna need another additional snow, snow storage space.
Yeah, they may need to haul it out, but they basically just have small areas here, and then small areas up here.
Yeah, I only see the small area up near Route twenty. I don't see any.
Just little areas right around the parking lot.
There's one over here.
Okay.
Do you have excess parking, so they could always store it in the parking lot needed?
Okay.
They are required, I think, to have nineteen, and they have thirty-five spaces, I think.
Oh, okay. All right.
He's just basing that on demand that he sees through his business. But, so they do have excess spaces. If they need to, they could store it, you know, in the parking lot itself.
All right.
And, and I think this isn't about the, the, the snow, but I'm thinking, Vito, maybe you can have Alex bring, I mean, I, I have, you know, my version of what, everything was brought to the design review, but maybe Vito can, can, I mean, not Vito, maybe Alex can bring the plans to show the Planning Board at the, at the next meeting. Because again, you know, the, the, you know, the whole project went through the Design Review Committee.
Yeah, I think we should have included that in the...
It, it, it might have been, yeah, yeah, I mean, it should have been in their package. Not, not what we got today, Amy, not in, not in that one. But in probably one of the packets that we had handed out.
Got a landscaping plan.
Oh, with your design review, did you have to have a landscaping plan with like the caliber and the type of the plant?
We did.
'Cause I noticed with the original, it doesn't have it.
Did he, Dave finish that landscaping plan?
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, we had them all, from the site plan to the products he was using on the building.
Yep, the lighting plan, the design, the elevation.
Can we get a copy of that from the next meeting?
It's, is that the...
Yeah, it, I, I think it's all in, in the original set.
The original just, it doesn't say like the caliber. Usually, there's like a landscaping planning schedule that lists like the types and the sizes. And this just shows, let's see, the one I have. Can you have the papers?
Well, somewhere along the line, we had it, because the determination was made by the Design Review Committee and the applicant, that, that there was, that there was actually too much landscaping.
Like usually, there's like...
And it was too close to the building.
These are a lot anymore. Usually, there's a regular, and there's usually like, if there's a tree or two, it says the caliber of the, there's usually like a schedule.
Right, maybe we can get Dave to give us that.
And it, and it might be somewhere in the file, Michelle.
All right.
So, I'll, I'll double check on that.
I did have a question, and thank you for the, where it talks about the additional lighting at the driveway. Is it possible to versus just putting a light at the entrance of the driveway? To put a streetlight on the street entering into the driveway? So, that's one streetlight we have at that point?
You can, it's not up to the applicant, it's up to the town as to whether or not a streetlight will go there. But, I mean, I would think based on, you know, the information that you received from, from staff that was sent to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, we, I wanted to talk about that later, but this, this is an excellent opportunity. We have an applicant here where they can put one streetlight on there, and we can begin...
It's not, it's not, the, the applicant, the, an applicant can't go to National Grid and ask for a streetlight unless the town...
Whatever the process, we would tell them through the...
Right, so I'm saying, it has to become, it has to come from the town.
Yeah, no, no.
Because the...
It's in the public way.
Right, because National Grid will say, well, that's all fine and good that you want one, Mr. Applicant, but, you know, who's gonna pay for it? And that's what we need, the, the, you know, contract with the town.
But it's certainly at the entrances who can require additional lighting on the, probably. I think the problem is that it's in the public way, in which...
I still think it's, okay, we can talk about it later, but I think the board should discuss it. We have an opportunity to get a streetlight here for this.
We could fund it.
Okay. All right, any questions, Amy?
Nope. Just the landscaping plan, if they can bring it next time, too.
Any other questions, Michelle?
No.
Okay. Carrie?
I do have a couple questions for you, Fred, although I noticed that you are waiting for more information as well, so I'm not sure if you can answer them, or maybe you could answer them. In terms of the amalgam separator, is that for, will there be new, is that for sectioning on old, or it's off? Oh, so no new mercury products, it's all old, okay. And then, wh- once it's in the tank, is that something that, and maybe that's a maintenance contract you refer to, that it's come, that they dilute it with water before it goes into our system? Or, like, how often do they come and clean that, or empty it, whatever the process is?
So, from what he says, it's, it stays in there. You know, and then he takes the, the container out once it's full. I don't know how he tells when it's full. He could probably give you a little more information. Kind of described it last time for the groundwater. He brings it to, he actually services it himself.
And where does he dump it?
He brings it to a company that, in Northborough, that actually takes it.
And goes right back into the, so it is the same, like what happened?
No, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't go into the water.
Oh, so it's taken care of properly?
Yeah, once, once the cartridge is full, he takes that out and brings it.
No, I see that's...
We, we, and I don't know if Fred wants to get into this. We, we know, we had a crash course in this, in this, not from Dr. Mohibian, but for not the dentist, that, that went through the ZBA. So, I don't know, Fred, if you wanna go into that, or wait for Alex, but...
That was what prompted my questions at the groundwater meeting, because the information was kinda limited in the application from Dr. Mohibian. However, the, and, and what he said at the meeting didn't quite match what was told to us at a previous meeting with a different dentist. And so, the maintenance... And so the maintenance contract is not part of this and should be part of the material that's submitted. But basically, my understanding is the amalgam is metal particles that are taken out. And they're taken off-site and recycled or disposed of at another appropriate place through a company that makes the amalgam separators who happens to be located here in Northborough. And then the water goes on into the sewer system. That amalgam separator is required by state law for all dentists, whether they're connected to septic or town sewer. So there's no, there's no problems with our groundwater or with the downstream impact to the sewage treatment plant.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. The other piece was just, I think you're waiting for an answer on X-ray developer fluid. We don't know if that's even applicable.
The, the doctor Mohibin indicated at the groundwater meeting that there would be digital X-rays and I just wanted some confirmation of that to have in the file going forward. That is also what we're waiting for for ground.
Got it.
Just confirmation that what he said was in fact the way it will be.
And then, and just to let you know, Dr. Mohibin couldn't be here tonight because of the holiday, but he'll, he'll be at the next meeting.
Okay. The other question was just in regards to any sort, I know you said they're waiting to hear another chemical. Is there any, you know, excess of fluoride or anything that would go into the system that, you know, would throw off anything in our current system? Or if there are different paste or fluorides or whatever other products that are used in the office?
Well, the, the idea behind the list of types and quantities of chemicals was more about how they're stored within the building and what is there for spill prevention and what mitigation is taken into account by the office to keep it from getting into the groundwater supply.
Right, okay.
And so that's why the list of chemicals and the quantities are necessary to determine if it needs to be in a big cabinet, a small cabinet, what kind of a cabinet will be stored in. We've had other projects in the groundwater area that stored large amounts of chemicals and they end up sealing the floor and creating a dike where the material could be captured in the floor and then taken off-site by a clean hovers type company if there was a large spill during the, the quantities that were forwarded to me after the groundwater meeting were small.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Let's ask the lady, thank you.
Anthony?
Uh, no questions.
Nope, okay.
No, my only other question was with the landscape began, is the reason why designer can cut them down in half? Was it for the snow removal?
Yes.
So that's where the landscape began.
Part, part of it was snow removal, part of it was just a very aggressive landscaping plan with too much against the building. So it's a safety issue as far as how far things have to be away from the building. So, and it, it, it like well exceeded what the, the regulations are.
One of the other items that forced the snow storage to be in front of the parking lot and to the side of the building was the weapons illumination in the back and the riverfront area. And the conservation commission prefers not to have it stored with salt and things mixed into it in that riverfront area. So they're trying to put it elsewhere, which is limited.
Makes sense. Anything else?
No.
Anyone from the public have any questions at this point for the applicant? No, all right. So, Vito, anything else from you at this point?
No, so we just need, landscape was scheduled with the caliber, all the sizes, going to have a light near the front entrance.
Something equivalent to what?
And I think I have that, Vito, but I'll, I'll check with you over the next couple of days.
I do have one more question.
And then you update some of the chemicals and all that. The store.
So for the light, I think it would be helpful if it were equivalent to, the functional equivalent of a streetlight in that area.
So a lot, yeah, larger than that.
Right.
We do have one question, Kathy. They're going to have the same sign that's down at his, his current building.
Yeah, he must have moved that sign.
Yeah. Are they going to do another test or you feel like, like what was done at the automotive shop on Route 20? Are they going to do something like that type of test for an LED test or is it, you feel comfortable with?
Yeah, he, he's just, he, actually, the applicant is before the ZBA next week. Because he's moving the same, he's moving the sign that, that's at his present facility. But he wants to enlarge it by four square feet. And so that exceeds our zoning. So he's before the zoning board of appeals for a variance to, to increase it by four square feet.
Because I thought it was interesting, the automotive place did the test for like about a week or so. Did the ZBA request them to test that?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, I don't believe so. I think it was just a matter of, of adjusting that.
Okay.
Just trying to figure out what, what works, how the sun hits it, what, you know, how the streetlights affect it.
Okay.
So I think it was just a, an internal test that, you know, that the manufacturer did for his, for his customer.
The, the sign in front of Mose?
Yeah, the, you try, probably.
Yeah, in front of Mose, yeah.
Correct illumination and stuff like that, but I thought it was good because I've never seen it before.
Right.
Like the test.
Yeah, there's various pictures and stuff.
Yeah.
So in order to continue this, you need to decide on an October meeting. And I just want to let you know, you know, ordinarily, I mean, you know, looking at the, the schedules of your first and third Tuesdays, August, excuse me, October 2nd would be your first meeting in October, but two things. I don't have any applications for that meeting. And also, you can't continue this meeting to October 2nd because he still needs to meet with groundwater, which is October 9th. So it falls in line to me, I would suggest no meeting on October 2nd, but that's entirely up to you. But you would need to continue this to October 16th. That's, that's your third Tuesday.
Okay. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, the only request that I have is that we're getting closer, you know, town meeting, it starts to come up again. And I think, you know, we keep skipping meetings and having them once a month. At some point, I think we need to start meeting and talking about if we have anything to put on town meeting floor for next year. Because if there's anything we need to research or information for, I think we need to start talking about it.
I should have been doing that all summer, if you have suggestions for zoning. But I, I would, I would certainly recommend that you're in the middle of a master plan, that, that you wouldn't be changing any zoning until you saw what the, the results of the, of the master plan was.
We can talk at the end. Right, I just didn't know if we should meet October 2nd, just to give us time. Or if there's only one applicant on the second meeting, we'll just talk about it then. Because if we're, I did talk, I'm talking about it over the summer, but we're on summer schedule and then we get to fall and then we skip the first meeting, so I just don't want to run out of time.
So what was that Tuesday?
Well, so for the purpose of veto, so we can let you go home.
Yeah.
Um, we got October 16th at seven.
You could do seven fifteen.
Yeah, we're going to say seven fifteen.
You could do seven oh five.
Yeah, well.
That's fine.
If, if that's going to end up being our next meeting, I do want to have that ten, fifteen minute window for the master plan stuff. While we've got George captive, so let's say seven fifteen, but you might sit around for a couple of minutes or we might talk about other stuff like we did today for a few minutes, so.
Fred, do you know if that's Earthworks tonight, by chance?
Earthworks is, Earthworks meets on Wednesday.
Okay, so.
I just throw up, it was in my calendar.
Seventeenth would be their, same week.
Okay.
And if we move this, if we continue this hearing, does that impact the ZBA? Do they also continue theirs for his meeting about the sign or does that go forward?
Nothing to do.
No, that would be, yeah, that would be separate, independent from us.
So we have a motion to continue the public hearing to October 16, 2018 at seven fifteen PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. You're good to go, have a great evening, thanks for coming in. Next, on the agenda is the continued public hearing for 222 West Main Street. Site plan approval, special permit, common driveway and special permits to family dwelling units. The applicant is Abu Construction, Inc. Engineers, Connorstone Engineering. We have an email from the applicant by Mike Sullivan, on behalf of the applicant, I should say, requesting, on behalf of Tony Abu, I hereby request the public hearing for the above captioned site be continued to your November meeting. If you need anything else, please let me know, thanks, Mike. When is our November meeting?
Well, as far as your November schedule, again, looking at the first and the third Tuesdays of the month, you cannot meet on November 6th, which is the election. There's a state law that planning boards in Massachusetts cannot meet on election days. So then you'd be looking at either the, holding a meeting on November 13th, which is, you know, not your normal night, or the 20th.
What day is Thanksgiving this year?
I.
Twenty second, yeah.
Twenty second?
Yeah.
Does, does Tuesday, the 20th, impact anybody on the board?
I don't know if they do the 13th.
I don't know if they do the 13th.
Thirteen, thirteen? Thirteen? Carrie, you give it the 13th? What, hold on, we can't do the 13th?
The groundwater is.
I just got a finger shake, okay. We can't do the 13th.
If there's reason to meet, then I don't want to.
Right.
So, you know, you can look at else on, I mean, look at that week. Otherwise, the, the 13th obviously is Tuesday, we've got the 14th. I'm looking at November, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm saying if we can't meet in November with the first one in December.
Well, how about Wednesday, the 14th?
Yeah, that's.
Can we do Wednesday, the 14th? November 14th?
Yeah.
And you?
Yeah.
On the side, we're good with Wednesday, the 14th?
Yeah.
And there's no Earthworks that day, right?
That's the third one, yeah.
Okay. I think after all these years, I'd get that right. Still don't know. Okay, so how about we go ahead and let Mr. Abu know that we expect to see him on November 14th at seven fifteen PM, okay? All right, that takes care of that one.
So how do we, how do we let the public know since we typically meet on Tuesday nights? It'll be on the.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be on the town's website.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
The only agenda, the town's website.
I mean, whenever you change your night, we don't do anything different. Other than, you know, obviously the law has to get posted, no, excuse me, posted.
Because when you look it up, it says, it says, planning board meets on the first and the third Tuesday night.
But then if you go to the agendas, then the agenda would be posted there.
Which, is, is there any way that we can start to try to figure out how to get, I mean, this is digressing into a different subject, but getting our minutes on there? Because our last minutes are March and the ZBA's last minutes are January.
They, I mean, they've all been provided, they're, I mean, whereas up to date is, you know, I'll, I'll check on that. But, I mean, they've all been provided to, to, you know, the office that posts them. As soon, as soon as you approve them, the next day they go. So they might just be behind themselves or, I don't know when you last looked, Michelle?
Today.
Oh, okay.
Because I read Carrie's note and I thought, you know, somebody from the public wanted to just get a, a sense of what's happening, right? They might go back and read ZBA and planning board minutes. And when I read the ZBA, the last one was January and when I read the planning board, the last one is March.
Yeah, no, they, I mean, it's, I'll check on that for sure. But they should be up there.
I think it's just a good thing, just so if someone wants to.
Oh, yeah, they, they absolutely should be up there.
Yeah.
All right, what is the 205 Brewer Street ZBA application about?
Uh, 205, that, someone is looking to purchase the house and run a dog walking business out of it. And so I forgot whether it's a home occupation or some sort of personal service, I think is actually how the, how it was classified.
To home personal service, not to exceed three dogs at a time, occasionally boarding dogs.
Yeah, over three dogs, it's a kennel, it's considered a kennel. And that's a whole different process that you need to go through. So the, I haven't talked to this person, they did it all through the building, you know, department, which is what they normally do. That's the proper procedure. But, but I know that this person, you know, did talk to the building inspector about that he may occasionally, you know, want to have, you know, one or, you know, two of the dogs sleep over, stay aboard at his house, I guess.
I do, I do appreciate the way that he wrote his application because one of the questions is there will be no nuisance or severe, serious hazard of vehicles or pedestrians, and his answer was there will not. Dogs will either be hanging out in the finished basement or playing in the fenced in yard in supervision. It's like, oh, that's kind of cool. All right.
So that's on the next ZBA agenda, that's on the October agenda.
Takes care of that.
That's the only one I think that we have, actually, I think two came in today or, or two called about filing today, but we don't have them yet, so.
Okay. And then we have guidelines for the two family dwellings, was this the one that was done by Judy Barrett for design review?
Yep. So that, I just wanted to provide you all a copy, the design review committee hasn't met on it yet, they are meeting on Friday. So, you know, there, there hasn't been any discussion yet with the design review committee.
Is this an 8:00 AM? It is. Okay, so design reviews at 8:00 AM for any members of the public that want to attend? Friday, the 21st. And the guidelines are available, the draft guidelines are available through your office if somebody wants a copy. That's great. And then the special permits and variances is what you were telling us about earlier.
Yep, that's just, you know, for, for your information.
Okay. And then Carrie, you gave us census information?
Yes, from the quarterly meeting, we had someone come in and present from, they live down, from, they're building partnerships with all the different regions to try to help build awareness about the census or try to move it online, get more people to do it, provide it in multiple languages. So they sent some interesting projections, I thought, for what to expect in Northborough through 2040 in terms of the census. So I shared that with everybody. And for, let's see. For population projections in Northborough, for anyone in the audience interested, we're, looks like 13,770 or about right around this time. Is that, what do you say, Kathy, is that where we are now?
The, actually, you know what, I was looking at employment, I was like, what? Yeah, we're at, we're at, actually, I don't know what the exact number is, but we always talk about it's right around 14,000.
Yeah, so only by 24, you're working at 16,636. So we'll jump there. It's just interesting to see all the different towns. So I gave everybody a copy of that.
Thank you. The, that's interesting, the employment numbers don't really go too high.
Yeah.
They don't move too much, so they expect a lot, this to remain a bedroom community. That's interesting. All right.
For the next 20 years.
Yeah. Yeah, beyond.
Maybe the master plan should talk about that because it's like, those are interesting numbers.
Oh, yeah, and they'll have, I mean, these are, these are right from the US Census Bureau. And so they'll certainly, you know, the, the consultants will certainly be using that. This is all done in, for Massachusetts at least, it's done in conjunction with UMass, what's called the Dunnehue Institute. And so that's, that's where everyone gets their, at least in Massachusetts, gets their projections from. So it's, you know, you're not, you're not going to find wild swings from, you know, say what the school department might say for population projections versus what the town, you know, government would say. It's, we all get it from the same source.
Right. Cool. And then you also gave us the budget calendar.
Oh, yeah, that came out today. So just to let you know, as far as, we were all talking this morning how, you know, some of us are still thinking it's still summer and we're already talking about town meeting. So town meeting is April 22nd and then backing into that, the warrant closes on February 4th. And the, excuse me, warrant articles are due February 4th from the boards and the departments to the town administrator. And then the selectmen closed the warrant on March 11th.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Did Amy want to talk?
Yeah, I can talk about town meeting. It's something I brought up in January, February. It had to do with the illuminated signs. And we talked about it and then we said, well, why don't, you know, we don't have time to put it on this year's town meeting, but let's talk about it for next year's town meeting, which would be now, for next year's town meeting. And there has been talk out in the, in the community because we're doing the master plan and we're doing the town comment. And the town comment, everybody wanted like a classic look to the downtown, very, but if you're going to have a big lit up illuminated sign next door, that really won't fit in with the classic look of the downtown. And I had looked at other towns, like even Marlboro, Westboro, Southboro, they don't allow these electronic message boards in their downtown areas. Like it's more of like a Route 9 thing or maybe even up near Wangman Southwest cutoff, but not something that people have in their downtown. And every week I have to drive, I drive from Northborough to Waltham and I take Route 20. And you can see the difference in the towns by what they have illuminating and that, you know, just the character of the town changes depending on what type of. depending on what type of signs are allowed.
You're talking about the electronic signs, Amy?
I'm talking about the electronic signs.
Not illuminated, because we have a lot of illuminated signs with the, with the spotlights?
Right, and some don't even allow that, I was surprised.
Which is something that the design review committee prefers.
Right, and I'm okay with that. It's the electronic signs. And there are some towns who actually have definitions for electronic signs and LED signs, and just allow them in certain places, but you never, like, in their downtowns, or lining their main streets.
So are you suggesting a, moving forward an elimination of them in a certain area?
I do, I, I, I think we should define them, because they're not really defined in our definition. Like, some towns define LED signs, electronic, Marlboro calls them electronic message center signs. So I think we should have a definition for them, and I do think they should be cited in certain areas. I wouldn't want Route twenty going through Northborough to look like a big strip.
Do they differentiate between LED signs and the electronic messaging signs, or no?
No, some towns call it electronic message, others call it LEDs.
Okay.
It's kind of the same thing.
Are you talking about if somebody has something in a window that says open, or you're just talking about the message changes? Like, like what we just talked about, like?
Right.
Like a dental one here, or?
Right.
Or the automotive place in a, that's the type of sign you're talking about?
The new signs that are popping out, that are more like computer boards. Is what I was talking about. Because I think, you know, like CBS Downtown has that message change, but I don't think it would hurt a business. Like, if I want something at CBS, I'm going to CBS, I'm not stopping at CBS because there's lights displaying that paper towels are four ninety-nine, I would stop for them whether or not they were lit up and flashing the weather, and, I just, I just feel it wouldn't fit in place when I listen to everybody talk about the master plan, and they want to make the downtown look nice, beautify the downtown, and I don't think that will add anything.
Well, I think most importantly, too, is the way the bylaw is today, it's, I think there's three points on it, and it's very vague, and it's open to interpretation. I think we should just get very specific in, in each sign, and where they are, and what each sign, put a name to it, and what should be allowed and not, and I assume we'd have to grandfather some things in, but really get the definition of each one down, and then figure out where we want them and don't want them.
Because the gas stations have it, because they change their prices on it.
Sure.
You know, so that, Cumberland Farm has that.
Right, but they also say, like, they're prohibited, like in Framingham, they're even prohibited except for gas stations. They even have it for restaurant drive-throughs, because they have to change there.
Yeah.
But it's very specific things.
Okay.
But it, it includes gas stations, so I think even in our bylaws, it says that gas stations are exempt, because you have to change it. So, whatever. But I just think if we had a definition, and then we could decide where they should be placed. And I, I think if it's not on this year's town meetings, then two years go by, and they're starting to become popular.
You're not thinking all the way down Route twenty, are you? Because then you've got, like, some of the schools that use them.
Right, and that's actually civic, government are not prohibited in some of the other bylaws. I think if we take the time to look at it next meeting, I can bring more information. But I did print out that they're prohibited except for institutional civic signs on gasoline price pods, when in conjunction of a movie theater, because they changed their movies. These are for the bigger towns. Drive-through for a restaurant.
Yeah, we wouldn't have that anyway.
Right, so those are things we wouldn't have, but that's, they prohibit them in their town, except for very specific areas, and we could do the same thing, we could prohibit them on Main Street, except for very specific places. Civic gas station. I just know, I see it online, like, somebody brought a sign, I guess, across the street from Dunkin' Donuts, and it was there for one day in the parking lot, and all of a sudden it lit up online, like, oh, what is that? But it was something that was attached to a truck that drove away. But I know the, the fear that went through the people, and I, and I know the feeling through the master plan about beautifying downtown.
There's a lot of feedback about this automotive sign, and it, I would say predominantly not, uh, positive feedback about that sort of bright animated, I don't even think animated is allowed, so I guess they're testing, so perhaps it's, wait and see.
It was, um, it was just, I mean, again, they're your bylaws, but just so that you all know, it was just a couple of years ago that this board changed the bylaw to allow these signs. So, um, the, um, the feeling at the time with the planning board was that, um, uh, people didn't like the, um, you know, A-frame signs that people had out to, like, announce something. Um, we had a series of meetings where we invited all of the businesses from all of the business districts to come to the planning board, and I think those were two nights that we, two different public hearings that we held about what, um, about being business friendly, what, what is it that businesses are looking for? Because the town really went down hard on, on all kinds of temporary signs, announcing like specials, or a dance class, or, you know, something like that. So, um, the planning board worked with the business community to come up with, and the building inspector to come up with, you know, what, what, something that everyone, you know, was satisfied with, and that was about adding this changeable copy. Um, so I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, Amy?
I attended the meetings, and I never thought that it was going to be electronic message boards. When I heard changeable copy, I thought it was, where they change, they have a little space underneath where you can change, like.
No, we talked about that, we talked about specifically how the building inspector at the time, I remember, talked about the, and I don't know what the terminology is, but there's electric messages that run constantly, it's kind of like the ticker tape, that's all I can think of.
Those are streaming.
Yeah, so, that, you know, that the board didn't want those, but that the changeable would be okay, and you increase the size of all the signs, um, to say that people could add this changeable copy, um, so that you could, you know, do away with, um, uh, the A-frames, and, you know, other things that people were putting out. So, it's, you know, again, just wanted to give you the background of how this came to be, um, that you, you know, the, the planning board, you know, presented this at town meeting, and, um, and each one of the zoning districts, as far as the, I can't remember if it was allowed in the industrial, if we changed the industrial district. Um, yep, the industrial district, too. So it was all the business zones and the industrial district, where this, um, up to twenty square, an additional twenty square feet for changeable copy message. So, that's just, that's the background.
In some of the districts, it's only if there's three or more tenants can they have changeable copy. And it limits the amount of space for changeable copying.
I think the difference, too, is the technology's changed in the last couple of years, too, now where the signs are much brighter than they were in the past, so.
I actually agree, I think it's part of the illumination part, like, how do you get someone to help you put wording in about illumination? Because I think that has to do with it.
Well, the, I mean, just now, for your information, you know, this isn't, you know, however you want to go on this, but just, you know, giving you as much information as we have. The, um, the building inspector, you know, and I think he's spoken with, with you all, but the, um, if anyone has, you know, and residents have called and board members have asked about it, um, he'll go out and talk to the owner, and then instruct them that they have to bring down the, you know, the brightness of it, of the, of the signs that are out there.
So, I have a.
So just to let you know, that that's, that's the current process.
So, Mr., Dr., is it Mohegan?
Moheban.
Moheban, okay. His current office is, is he the only tenant in that building?
Yes.
Okay.
And he'll be the only tenant in this building.
He has this changeable copy sign.
Yep.
And he's in Business West.
Yes.
So.
And then, and he's moving to the industrial district.
Right, but right now he has a sign that allow, that has changeable copy.
Mm-hmm.
And it can only be sixteen square feet of space, because there's only one tenant in there. So what he has there, is that only sixteen square feet of space?
Just the changeable part of it. Um, the, the, his, um, I don't know if I have it in his new.
That's the tricky part, like, it's illuminated, the whole sign, but there's a changeable part.
I have the picture of it, I don't have the size.
So it's, this is only the part that they're talking about?
Okay, so it could be.
Even though this is illuminated, that's the changeable part.
He did ask for variance, so I don't know if it was for a bigger size, I don't know.
So people might be looking at saying, this looks very large, yes, because it's all illuminated, but this is the only part that the message change is on it.
Right. Okay.
That's, I think, the confusing part.
I just think we should change, especially with, I think last year when I brought it up, I was thinking at the time of town, and then it was Leslie who said, well, why not include those to see some moves for us?
His, his proposed sign, so I'm not sure which part is, is expanding by four square feet, because that's all he's asking for variance, but his, um, his, you know, um, um, set sign, that, you know, that doesn't change, is four feet by eight feet, so that's thirty-two square feet. And then his, um, changeable is three feet, three feet by eight feet.
That's twenty-four.
So I think that's, um, in the industrial zone, I think that's where, for the, for the new, for the new sign. Um, in the industrial district, the changeable part can be twenty. And what did we just say it was, twenty?
Twenty-four.
It's twenty-four, so that's the four feet.
That's where the four extra square feet are coming from.
Because that's what he has right now?
He, um, no, it's less than, is tw- um, what he has right now is sixteen square feet.
Okay.
Of changeable. No, no, I take that back, it's, it's twenty, and what, and he's going to twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yeah. Or asking to go to twenty-four.
Okay, so he doesn't have variance for a sign right now?
Um, I don't know what he presently has, let me see if he put his old application.
But I don't know if it was height or size.
Sometimes they include their former decision. I, I didn't bring any of this, because I, I mean, I just brought his new, because Amy had asked for his new, but I, so I don't have his old information.
Okay.
No, and it's not attached to his application.
Well, even that's fine, I mean, sometimes it has the weather, it's not even business weather, so that doesn't seem like it. Is that allowable? It doesn't appear to be allowable.
Well, it, it just, it's, it's changeable copy, you know, right now, the bylaw doesn't define what changeable copy is.
Well, it just says a sign which contains no other label, I don't know if it's related to, um, change, electronic or, or static, but I don't know if that's, do we need to have illuminated weather and stuff like that, I mean, at what point do we want to?
I mean, again, it, it's entirely up to the board how you want to propose it, I just wanted to give you the background on it.
St. Bernard Dent's also sometimes has the temperature on their sign. So do you want to tell them they can't do that? If you do it for one, you got to do it for all.
Right.
So, and then you also run into First Amendment stuff, um, potentially, so you're going to kind of be careful about how much you do restrict.
Funny, because you haven't obtained the weather on your car, on your phone, now it's on the signs.
All right, so.
So I just wanted to request that we put in a definition for electronic, what did they call them in Marlboro? They, some of them call it LED signs, and some of them call them electronic message boards. And maybe think of putting them in certain areas.
Okay, so, the Lions, um, the Lions Club has an electronic message board with tracks. So that would be included. Yeah, I know that they're civic, but that would be included, they, they may have an exception, but that's the type of sign that would be included.
Right.
Okay, and then, St. Bernard Det, the dentist, the other dentist.
They, I mean, any, any time, because, because zoning, I mean, excuse me, because the sign bylaw, and Northborough is in the zoning bylaw, it, and people have, uh, it's just like the rest of zoning, you're grandfathered if you change, you know, the regulation. Um, a lot of communities, um, and it's, it's a, um, you know, it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive undertaking, but a lot of, not a lot, but some communities take it out of their zoning, so that people can't get grandfathered. Um, the Framingham, I believe, is out of the, is not in the zoning.
So how do they handle it?
And so that, so if there's ever, so when you do go to change something, then there's a, a sunset, it's called a sunset clause, like, everybody has to conform, you know, I don't know how it's written, I've never written one, but I mean, you, you have a sunset clause that everyone has to conform in a year, or two years, or something, you know? I mean, just like as an extreme, say you, say you did away with, um, pylon signs, you know, and anyone who had a pylon sign, if it was outside of your zoning and just in the general bylaw, you know, everyone would have to take their signs down and, and conform to whatever the new bylaw is. That's not the case in our town, but just to, you know, give you that information. So ours is in the zoning bylaw, so people would be.
Who receives signage in Framingham, is that selectman, or, well, now, city council?
I, I, I don't know, and I can find out, but I, so I don't know who.
Just curious.
Yeah, I don't know who regulates it.
How that works, okay.
Because they went, if I understand correctly, Framingham several years ago went through a big change in there, and I think that's when they took it out of the zoning, put it into the general code, and, um, and, you know, people had, I don't know how many years it was, but, you know, to conform to the, to the new bylaws. Um, but again, that's when it's out, when it's not part of your zoning bylaw.
Okay. So, you are looking for, but you're not only looking for a definition of electronic message boards, you're also looking for a restriction. And you're not actually looking for a restriction, you're looking for a prohibition?
Not all in town, I thought we would discuss it, it didn't have to be townwide.
Okay.
I thought there'd be something the board could talk about.
Let's put this on the agenda, then, because I'm sure members of the public are going to want to hear about this.
Right.
Okay, so let's move that to the next meeting.
On the October sixteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Throw it on there, okay.
Yep, I could put on a standard, I mean, what we've done in the past is a standard line, you know, but, um, town meeting. So, you know, every, every agenda will just be on there. And then I can look for, um, some examples, I'll talk to the, the building inspector, you know, get some background from him, um, about, you know, whether or not, because we'll have to look into, I mean, depending on where you want to go with this, um, whether you want to change what's in the zoning as, you know, regardless of what district it's in right now, but right now, we, we call it changeable copy message. So if you want to change that to mean something else, and then, you know, we'll have a new definition for that, or, so, we'll, you know, I'll get, I'll get some general information for you.
Okay.
Some, it's kind of like Signs one oh one, about what all these terms mean.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I was wondering if we could put general bylaws for two thousand nineteen town meeting on the agenda, just in case.
General bylaws?
Well, not general, but in case I come up with something else, there's a couple of other things that I meant.
Yeah, I'll just put that town meeting, Amy, that's what.
Not just the other signs.
Okay. I'm looking at you funny, because I'm wondering if you're talking about the actual general bylaws?
Yeah, no, not the general bylaws, sorry, just overall, anything that might.
Yeah, I'll just put on the standard, I think what, what I've done in the past years is, well, you know, it's just, you know, um, town meeting prepper, I don't know, whatever I called it, but.
Warren Harzil?
Yeah, so I mean, you can just talk about, you know, town meeting, yeah.
Okay. Um, does anyone else have a bylaw? You, Anthony?
Not yet.
Okay. Carrie?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, you're, you're both reserving your right to bring it forward in the future. Michelle?
I don't plan to have a bylaw, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm with you, because I think the master plan's going to take precedence, so. Um, and that takes care of all the papers in front of me, except the minutes, and, let's see, we have minutes for, just for August twenty-one. So, the minutes for August twenty-one were done somewhat uniquely, because it was a very long meeting, and our typical stenographer was not here. Um, we cannot create transcripts, because those aren't minutes. Minutes are just summations of what happened at the meeting. Um, and I know, Carrie, that you had sent an email requesting additional information be put in. Um, that would result in minutes that are like thirty pages long with this meeting, because it is so long, it's such a long meeting. Um, but I think we've got two problems, one is resources. We don't have a stenographer who can go do that. And so there may be the service, the transcription service, that could be available, but again, that creates a transcript, which is not the same as minutes. Um, the minutes that were provided by Kathy meet the standards for minutes. So I think for the August twenty-one, um, meeting, I'm inclined to keep it in that current format and not add in a transcript.
I'd like to continue, I, there was a lot missing.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that we're going to be. No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that we're gonna vote on it.
Oh, thanks.
So I just wanted to clarify.
Hold on, I'm not done. I'm not, I'm not done. In the future, um, hopefully we can have resources to make the minutes a little bit more comprehensive. These particular minutes, I think, are cumbersome because of the length of that meeting. And, um, because of the number of participants. And we're not required to put in everything that everybody says at every single meeting. I mean, you read the minutes from some other boards, there's nothing in them. They're just really bare bones. And we don't do that. We typically provide more than that. Um, so, you know, I think we're asking an awful lot from staff. Kathy's the town planner. She's not the town stenographer. We're asking a lot from our, the town planning office to create an entire transcript of these meetings. Um, because frankly, they're available online. That's how you got them. So, you know, to, to that extent, I don't know that we can put in the verbatim that everybody may be looking for. There may be important points missing. And that's, that's legit.
Okay.
But there are some other things that just really don't have to be in here.
So I just wanted to clarify that the, um, applica- the app itself is called Transcribe, but this wasn't an actual transcription. It's, it's similar to how other minutes have been created. So it's not a verbatim of what people have said. It is a summary based on a software that's called Transcribe, but this is not an actual transcription. I think on my note I put, I realized minutes are not a transcription, but that the minutes that were presented were lacking. Uh, I listed out the information that it didn't include, such as our own comments, public comments weren't included, motions were missing, people who made the motions were missing. I mean, this didn't include the basics of what a minute should include at, from, from my perspective. And my point was that it would be, um, I didn't feel comfortable approving them in that form because it was just missing so much from the meeting. Someone should be able to pick up the minutes and understand what happened. And I don't think that was evident in what we were given.
Well, I think it was evident that as to what happened. I do agree that there's question marks where who made the motion, who seconded it. And I think that's because Kathy didn't have them in her notes and she didn't know if any of us remembered who did it. And that makes sense. That's why we get the minutes in advance. So like Anthony could say, no, I made that motion or I seconded that motion or whatever it was. Um, certainly you know what happened because the motion and its approval or denial is written right there.
May I?
Yep.
So I ju- I just think there was, there was a long meeting. There was a lot of information that came out, both from the board and from the participants. And I think there was, and Kathy, I, I, I know that you have so much to do.
I have no ego in these minutes.
So, and I, this is nothing on you at all. So I just think that this particular case, I think we need to be a little bit more specific or, or definite in terms of what was said. There were some fine points. And I just think for, if anything down the road were to come back at us, I would like it to be documented, what things that were said by everybody that was at that meeting is. And maybe it doesn't need to be as thorough as what, um, we put here, but, uh, something a little bit more.
Well, certainly at the shorter meetings, it's easy to do that.
Yeah.
You know, and there's only like two or three citizens here and only one of them has something to say. That's easy enough to do. At these longer meetings, um, it does become more difficult to do that. Um, I understand what you're saying. It really, this is gonna be a resource issue. So if this board wants more comprehensive med- minutes from August twenty-one, we're not gonna meet the time standards that you demand because every, all the other minutes from this meeting and everything after this are gonna get pushed until somebody has time to finish the eight twenty-one minutes. So just keep that in mind. Um, you know, I know that at the very first meeting, you tried to call a point of order on the minutes and, um, and the time standards on the minutes. And we, we can't have everything. We have very limited resources in this regard. And I think that the planning department does the very best that it can do with the resource that it has. And, you know, if, if we want immediate transcription available, we have to petition Finance Committee for a bigger budget for planning.
So, the reason why I did the minutes was, was to keep you on schedule. You know, that, that was a big point that was made, you know, when, when the new members came on the board. Um, and that's fine, you know. I mean, there was reasons why we were behind and, and those were completely legitimate. Um, but Elaine wasn't, you know, Elaine is the board secretary. And Elaine can't get here, um, a lot of times because of her work. She works outside of Austin. And, um, so typically what she'll do is, you know, she reviews, you know, she watches it at home. And, um, so it takes like, you know, three or four times that you have to go through the meeting. And then, um, and then, you know, she puts the minutes together and, you know, that's what, you know, you've all become accustomed to. And there's, and there's no problem with that, you know. I mean, they're usually, you know, five, six pages long. Um, Elaine also does them for three other boards in town. So, so you're not the only board. So it's, it, it, so I took it upon myself, when she couldn't get minutes done for your meeting, I did them myself. So, so there you go. That's, that's what you, that's, that.
Can we buy the, the by next meeting that we have? Can we look into this product Transcribe and see if we can actually get it for our board?
Um, it, you have a board secretary. I mean, if you wanna do away with.
But I mean, I think it's.
That would be the worst thing I would, I mean, I, I would not suggest that at all to, to do away with the board secretary.
But I'm, I'm saying for Eva, if she's not here, I just, I don't think it's hurtful to have it, to get the information about, you know, how does it work, what's it cost, do other.
Right, but there's a person that has to do it, from what I understand. It's not, it's not a machine. It's a, it's a person has to use the Transcribe app. So, you know, Elaine's been, uh, you know, a, a excellent board secretary for probably twenty years here. And, and, you know, I have every intention of keeping her on as.
No, I think she's excellent. But what I'm saying is if you need someone to take this app that just transcribes and then summarizes it all, maybe this would make it easier so she doesn't have to watch the video three or four times.
Um, I can talk, I mean, I, I have no idea what the cost is involved. I have no idea. You know, a couple of the board secretaries use Dragon. Uh, you know, that's another software. Some like it, some don't. Um, some prefer that. Some take minutes, like when you see Elaine here, she takes minutes right on the laptop, just like Debbie used to do. So, um, you know, I've shared it with everyone. After Carrie had sent me that email, um, I shared it with the various board secretaries that if anyone, you know, is this something that you wanna look into? You know, here, you know, we all know about Dragon, but, you know, none of us knew about Transcribe, but that's, that's no big deal. Um, but I mean, you know, Elaine is your board secretary. You've never had an issue with her minutes. Um, when I do my minutes, you know, when I do the minutes for this board or any other board, I mean, you know that like a page, a page and a half. I mean, I joked with Carrie and I said, these are long for me. Um, but, you know, so what, whatever you wanna do. I mean, you know, I've had Elaine move past August. I told her she wasn't gonna be responsible for it. I would take care of it. And then, um, she's got, you know, um, ZBA um, and, uh, you know, and this, you know, tonight to take care of so that you've got it for your next meeting. So if people, you know, wanna take, uh, you know, just like you always do, you know, amending the minutes if you wanna add things in there. I mean, that's, that's your preference, that's.
Amy, I know you're not ready. I know you're not ready.
And I think that Transcribing is a great idea. We're dragging it just to help Elaine because I think the minutes are important. And when, if you read about decision-making, it talks about minutes and how important they are. Like if anything ever went to go to court, they can't use the videotapes. They go off the minutes. And it says if you don't have good minutes, you can't uphold any decision. And it said the minute should be done within five days so your board members.
It's absolute.
I, I can bring you there. I'll send you the article.
I'd love to see the article because.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked to the Attorney General about our minutes in town, so.
Right, but I'm just.
You'll, you'll never get them in five days. I can promise you.
Well, I'm just saying that's what the article said, but the minutes are important because if.
You've never had, I mean, you all have a problem with my four-page minutes. I have no problem with that. If people wanna fill in the blanks, go for it. Um, I don't, you know, I take notes for what I need to take them for, of what I need to do, you know, between now and the next meeting for all of you. So if, if people want to, you know, I'm kinda sorry, you know.
No, no.
I mean, if people wanna kind of fill in the blanks there, you know, absolutely, I mean, that's.
All right, so this is what I'm gonna suggest. Carrie, finish the minutes in the way you think is appropriate. And then send them to Anthony. And then he can supplement it. And then you can send it to Amy, who can fill it in from there. And then Michelle, and then I'll take them at the end.
Deal.
All right, because I, I just can't tax the, the planning department with that kind of work, given everything else that they have to do for us, so.
I think this is, I think this is a special month. I mean, I think.
It is.
So I don't, I think this is out of the norm. I think the meds normally are very thorough. Um, and then I think this is, I think we treat August as special and then we move on.
Good.
So what does the staff use the Dragon software for, Kathy?
Uh, some of the, some of the board secretaries do. It's just how they, you know, I couldn't begin to tell you how it works, but.
Well, Dragon speak, because I have had to use it before. When I have surgery on my shoulder, I always have to use it. Um, so it is just, it's auditory text to type.
Yeah.
Or, um, audio to text, rather. And it does about an eighty to ninety percent accuracy rate, which is pretty good for an audio to text. Um, but that involve, that requires somebody to watch and then speak into the Dragon speak, um, microphone or whatever equipment you're using. And then it creates the text for the minutes. Um, in order for Dragon to do a full transcript of the hearings, you'd have to have it set up here at the hearings and hooked into everyone's microphone.
Well, and I know that's been.
Really expensive.
Right, I know that's been a, the, the people that don't like Dragon is because they can only hear one person.
Yeah.
Um, you don't pick up the rest of the board. So, I mean, every, everyone who does the minutes, there's many people in town that do the minutes for the boards. Everyone has their own way. Um, I don't wanna tell anyone how to do their minutes, that, you know, they, um, you know, I mean, again, you'll see some people typing right on the laptop. Other people, um, like a conservation commission, they get, they get taped. Sometimes we do that at ZBA too. Um, if, you know, the hearings are lengthy and then they'll go back and, you know, listen to the tape. Here, you know, it's, it's nice that they're, you know, visually taped so that that's what Elaine watches when she can't be here, so.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Could we adjourn?
Do we have to continue the minutes or we don't have to even vote on that?
We don't have to, I don't, we don't have to deal with them.
Nope.
Okay. Anything else on this end?
No.
Nope, 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 nope. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
I'll, I'll favor.
All right.
Thanks for coming.